Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you all doing today? Good, good, good. Welcome, welcome. I would like to call this meeting to order.
7:05 PM.
7:05 PM. And we would like to ask if you can, please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance to the flag with us.
Pledge of allegiance to the two flag of United States of America, and to a team by which it stands, one nation under God, in which there is liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett. Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman Spivey.
Here.
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Hudson. Mayor Ford.
Present. All right. Motion carries. At this time, Ms. Barnes, Leroy, if you lead us in a word of prayer.
Yes. My first three and six prayers are all that way without telling each other that I'm thankful for allowing us to come to the devil. I actually bless our mayor, the city council, and the residents of this country that we have to know and inform the people, although that we are present for the president of the county.
Yeah. All right. Thank you so much. At this time, we need approval of the minutes.
General proceedings. Approval of the meeting minutes. Approval of the ready city council meeting minutes, December 11th, 2023.
All right. It's been properly motioned. Second. Are there any corrections, questions? Hearing, no questions or corrections. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have communications and also reports by the mayor. At this time, we would like to bring forward the Environmental Commission Chairman, Jennifer We have presentations that we want to make tonight. I think that's why most of you here. So good to see you.
Hello. Welcome, everyone. I want to first introduce our commissioners. If they would come up forward, please. We have Commissioner Barbara Swain, Commissioner Onetta Outlaw, Commissioner Helen McLendon, Commissioner Cecilia Murphy, Commissioner Bridget Gardner-Merchant, our commission coordinator, Doreen Purvis. You guys come on up. So every year, we've been doing this. Of course, for COVID, we went ahead and we had to take a little break. But these ladies were very helpful with doing the judging. We had almost 50 houses to judge, and we did it in two hours. Thank you, ladies. With the help of our mayor and city council and rich township, we had Mr. Bellany. I don't know if he's here tonight, Mr. Bellany. He was our driver. He was very great. He drove us around, so we were able to quickly judge. We've been doing this for over 35 years, ladies. Am I right?
I'll tell you each.
Okay. And so we're very happy to see so many people come out. And this one, we ask for people to fill out the forms because for the beautification, we go to every house. But this time, we only go out to the people who have filled out the form. And we were so happy to see all the work that everyone put in and all the pleasure we had for lighting up our city. And we appreciate everything. So let's get to the awards. Ladies, you want to stay or you want to sit? If I could have the mayor come up, please, and Alderman Edwards from Ward 1. We're going to introduce our second place winner, Latoya Griffin from Ward 1. And our first place winner from Ward 1, Anthony and Sharon King.
You want to help you with your light bill? Because it's going to be a little higher.
Thank you, Alderman, for understanding that. Thank you, Alderman Edwards. Let's see. Do we have Alderman Lockett? Would you please come down and join us for Ward 2? We have second place for Ward 2, Salvador Zamorio. And our first place winner for Ward 2 is Jessie and Deborah Walker. Oh. Now, we have the Ward 3. Can we have Alderman Hudson come up? Would you mind? Second place, we have Nita and Kenneth Sims. And our first place winner for the third ward is the Schmidt family, Kenneth Schmidt. Fourth ward, Alderman Spivey. Can you please come up? Second place, we have Sharon Griffin. And first place for the fourth ward, we have LaMysel Navalas. We're going to call up. We have, we give out two prizes for each ward, and then we have an overall of the whole city. So this year, our overall winner for the whole city was an award four.
Okay. Excuse me.
Yes.
Have you did fifth ward?
No.
Okay. You haven't did, called the fifth ward, people.
Well, I was just thinking of making Alderman Spivey go back and forth.
That's all right, man. He don't mind.
Okay.
Okay, okay, Alderman Spivey, they want, will you mind stepping on the side for a moment, please? I don't have common sense, but that's okay. Alderman Davis, would you mind coming up for the fifth ward? For first place, we have Vicki Allen. Alderman Spivey, can we have you again? Thank you. We have the overall winner for the whole city, Christopher Wiley from the fourth ward.
She needs to come up. No, ain't never hold that foot.
Yeah. The whole family need to come up, Lockett. Yeah, everybody. Come on.
Next, November, look for your new water bills. You'll see the application. And then you also have applications here at City Hall. And you just need to turn them in like before the middle of the month. But thank you, Alderman and City Council, and we'll see you for the beautification
Thank you, Jennifer, and the committee. You all did a great job. We had some beautiful homes out there this season, and we do appreciate each and every one of you for the hard work that you put into this. And I want you to know that, overall, it made the city really light up. And I had the opportunity to ride through some of the communities, and I was really, really impressed with the hard work and the way it was all lit up. And coming off of covert, it was really, really nice. So thank you, and let's try this again next year and the years after that as well. So thanks to each and every one of you, as well as you too, Carolyn. All right. So the committee's done, right? Okay. Let's go back to the agenda. City clerks report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to share some information for the seniors, that there is, there are senior-only DMV facilities. One is in Evanston, the other is in Bridgeview, the other is in Westchester, and more recently, Calumet Township Community Center in Calumet Park. So if you are a senior and you don't want to stand in line, you can definitely visit one of these facilities. Also, at the regular DMVs, if you talk to them at the door and show them your ID as a senior, you don't have to stand in line as others do. So that is all I wanted to share. End of report.
All right. Thank you. Collectors' report.
Collector's report is in your packets. If you have any questions, please feel free to let me know.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Treasures' report.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the end of beginning balance in December 31, 2023, we had $20 million, 947,725.86. Revenue collected was $4 million, 751,911.39. We had a total of disbursements or expenses was $5 million, 200,681.64. And so the ending, ending balance for December 31, 2023, we had $20 million, 498,955.61. At that time, expenses exceeded revenues, but that was mainly due because we had a bond payment due for December, almost $2 million, 712,675 even. End of my report, Your Honor.
Thank you, Treasurer.
Oh, I'm sorry. And just for information for Alderman, there is $640,363.36 left in the amphitheater that we will be able to use for the next coming shows. End of my report, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. Next, we have the committee reports. And the first committee we have tonight will be the Finance Committee. Alderman Lockett is the chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeking Council's approval for the vouchers in the amount of $842,456.22.
Second. It's been probably motioned in second. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing, no questions, no comments. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, Mayor, needs council approval for the IMRF Coordinator, and the city treasurer, Stephen R. Burris, has been selected to fulfill that role.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Any questions?
Yeah, question, Mayor.
Yes.
Well, I think Treasurer Burris would be a good additive for the support role in the IMRF to support HR. So I think that's a brilliant idea to help the employees as well as everyone else in the city of Country Club Hills with their retirement funds.
All right.
He better be.
No other questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
As they say, Steve, you better be. Yes.
Okay.
End of my report.
Motion carries. End of report. Next report we have is Lord and Ordinance, Government Operation, Alderman Hudson, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to announce my next meeting will be February 5th of this year at 6:00 PM at City Hall. 6:00 PM. Is that good for the committee?
I've got to look at my schedule. You've got to look at calls.
Okay. Well, suggest your schedule if you can. The meeting is at 6:30.
This is 6:00.
End of report.
This is 6:30.
6:30.
I meant 6:30 if I say 6:00. 6:30. End of report, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Public Works and Utilities, Alderman Davis, Chairman.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to schedule a meeting for February 12th at 6:00 PM. And that's the end of my report.
All right. Thank you. Economic Development Planning, Zoning, Alderman Spivey.
Yes, Mayor. Just want to reiterate that we will be having Planet Fitness coming to Country Club Hills. We're waiting on Commed to come over to switch the lights over. So hopefully, within the next couple of days, once the lights are turned over, then Planet Fitness will start to build out. Also, want to announce that Sweet Sports Bar and Grill will be leaving, and there will be a new tenant coming in soon. But they have some other things, some other obligations to the city first, so I just wanted to give a report on that. End of my report.
All right. Thank you. Last report would be Education, Parks and Recs. Alderman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a meeting on February 8th at 3:00. We were looking at what we call New Roots as an organization that's coming out here to help the schools. So I will be sitting down with them to discuss the program for March 19th and March 20th. Also, I will be getting in touch with Target for summer programs for the Park District to see how I can help him. I was at Hillcrest today talking to them about coming up there and starting the program. And I also got a call from the seniors. Today, I will be doing a Black History lecture for them on February 13th. End of my report.
All right. Need a motion to open the floor to the public?
I'd like to make a motion, open the floor to the public.
Second.
It's been probably motioned in second. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Public, if you would like to address the council, please come to the mic and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please. Give us your name.
Okay. My name is Brenda Irving, and I'm in the community. And can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Ms. Irving, can you spell your last name for me? Please.
Sure. I-R-V-I-N-G.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And I'm coming, and I just hope you can hear me patient, and I will limit to three minutes or less. I'm coming in complaint to the Somner Landscaping behind my house. Is that, can I go on with that?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I think their location is not conducive to the residential neighborhood that it's located in. It doesn't seem also like they have set regular, normal business hours of operation. I've seen men working, coming into work at 1:30 in the morning. My husband has to wear earplugs every night. They're right behind our backyard, and they have a fence that is flimsy and thin, and is really not appropriate surrounding the business, the business that they have. I had addressed this before about that little fence. I think it should be much bigger. Also, there's a loud, roaring loud of, a sound of engines, of massive trucks, not just landscaping trucks, 18-wheelers, all kind of trucks in the back there of our house. And also, there's a curb, like an incline hill, that if our children mistakenly take their, bounces their basketball from the basketball net, it goes in their, in their little incline because of that little fence, and they can't retrieve any of their balls. Also, looking at, you know, this disparity, I can't help but thinking that the property value of our homes will be drastically reduced because of all of this noise in the back. Not to mention, last but not least, they promised the homeowners certain incentives that they have not carried out. Thank you for hearing me patient.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
My name is Laura Lozada, and I also am next door to Brenda. And I want to complain, we have come here and seen like nothing is done. They are not supervised. The, the area is unkempt. We can't, if I want to sell my house, I can't. We have high, as you know, property taxes as it is. And now we have that monstrosity that's in back of us. Now, we mentioned it to you before, but nothing is done. That's all I want to say. I wish that if you do something, you say something, you carry it through.
All right. Thank you. Who else? Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. My name is Salvador Zamora. I'm in Lockett's Ward. The excessive driving, okay? When the people are driving down the block, they hit the corner, and the signs is posted right there, the speed limit is 25 miles an hour, but they think it's a freeway. They're going 50 miles, 50 miles down the, down the street, a regular residential street. We have kids now, okay? Before, back in the day, before the grandkids came along, you know, they lived in the city, mom and dad, well, now they're dropping and watch them. The kids can't even go out there and play because they're flying down, down, down the streets, every street, especially on Sycamore Avenue, when they hit that, when they hit that curb on 175th. Now, I spoke about this last year, and a couple other guys from the homeowners from my neighborhood, who brought this up about speed bumps. I get why we can't put speed bump because of police officers, in case they got to go, you know, damage the vehicles. I get it. But we have to do something to slow this down because it's getting carried away. I could show you my video cameras, my, all my security cameras, because I put the security cameras on all, all my neighbors. Five security, five houses, I put security camera. I could show you all the videos, okay? This is becoming ridiculous. I'm a taxpaying person here, all right? My kids can't even go out there. I even went further and put the little, the little green kids with the thing slowed down. They don't pay attention to that. And we started from the beginning. I bought five of them. I started from the beginning of the block and broke it down all the way. They don't, they don't hear to that. Now, you guys put a little, a little thing with the slow thing, like supposedly supposed to be a camera, that, that stopped them. But then you guys pulled it out two days later. Why? That's why I want to know. And it's getting carried away because it's not only, only there, it's a couple other blocks as well. If you sit there, you could just sit there and just watch, and you see how the cars are flying by. I get the youth is moving then, but they have to have respect to the elders and also to the kids. Because what did they kill a little kid when they're out there playing? Who's going to be responsible? Are we going to throw the book at them? No, we're not. They might get a slap on the wrist because they're kids being kids. I get it. We were young one point in time. We all were reckless driving. Let's be realistic here. But we have to slow it down now. We have to, what's called, talk to these people, hey, slow it down, slow it down, slow it down. What's the best way? A speed bump. Putting speed bump in certain areas? We all know that what's going to happen? They're going to slow down because then they're going to fly through a speed bump and mess their cars up because they're going to make the suspension up, all right? And it's going to cost them money on the long run. So that's one thing that I'm bringing again. I brought this up in the summertime, I'm bringing it up again. We got to fix it, please.
All right. Next.
Just want you to know that School District 144, Hurry Hills is hiring for superintendent. So they're looking out, they're putting out a search team, letting everybody know if they know anybody who wants to be superintendent of School District 144. Please apply. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi. I'm Jennifer Denton. I went to the American Baseball Association Conference with my husband and my son, and I just want to let you know that the Major League Baseball, they're looking for young people, females, and people of color. So please apply. They said there's tons of jobs online, and they'd want neighborhoods like ours to get, get the word out to know that there's tons of jobs, and they need people that are here and are educated, and they're just looking for people. So I just want to let everyone know to make sure you go to mlv.com, and if you're interested in any kind of job from down low to up high.
Thank you. Plenty of jobs out there. Okay.
Make a motion to close the fold to the public.
Okay. I need a second. It's been probably motioned in second. Roll call.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
All right. Motion carries at this time. One last item on the agenda, that would be the automatic reports, and we'll start with...
That's fine. Go right ahead, sir. Thank you, Mayor. To the residents of Country Club Hills, we know that in order to hold our property value up and to take care of our community, we need to assist our grammar school, high schools, and our children. So I'm looking for 46 volunteers on March 19th to meet me over at 3600 West 203 Street. We will be putting all the information on our website so that you will know then and follow. the following Wednesday, March the twentieth, we will be at Rich Township doing the same program. The program will be where the seniors will come down and we will be waiting for them to talk and discuss future. What do they want to do in college? What do they want to do with trade? How can we help you? So my programs are being put in effect by support of the City Council, all the Aldermen and the Mayor, so that we can try to build our schools up to do better. Um, our children are our future. We got to try to save them. It's very important. And then I would try my best to take this program to Hillcrest and the other two school districts, one forty-four and one sixty. But at the same time, we'll start like at nine o'clock, we'll go to twelve. We'll have maybe an hour session with each individual, uh, young lady or young man. You will be able to talk to them, and they will talk to you. And, um, I and a few Aldermen, hopefully, and the Mayor will provide lunch so you'll have something to eat. But it's important that we give back to our young people and help our community become better. End of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Spivey.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to report, uh, in the fourth ward. This has been going on for the last, I think, uh, close to three weeks now. I've called in about a couple of lights, flashing lights on Chestnut that's going off over there on, on one hundred eighty-eighth. It's been blinking out for the last three weeks. I think, uh, I was told that the ComEd people was gonna come out, but somehow I think they've overlooked that. And then there's two lights out over, over on Keeler that the residents been, uh, calling in about. And I've talked with the, uh, Public Works Director over there. So they were supposed to get that done a couple of weeks ago, but still to no avail. So, um, hopefully, um, we can get on top of that for the residents. End of my report.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Lockett?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just wanted to share a few things. Uh, one is that, um, I'm looking into when, um, the clerk was talking about the Secretary of State for the seniors, uh, for them to come out and do an onsite thing right here at the Country Club Hills. So to take care of the seniors and the residents and renewing of the license, they would actually come right here on sites that you won't have to go to Palatine that far. And most of us ain't got, um, gas money to get that far or the slippery road. So it'd be nice if they come here. So within the next month or so, we'll have an answer of a date or when they'll be coming out. Um, next is, um, a young lady that's from, um, the South Suburban, Southland area. Uh, actually, she's in L.A. now, but she's having this, um, superstars talent agency is the name of her company. And it's a youth talent showcase, uh, for anyone participating from one years old to twenty years old. And that's gonna be, um, first place prize is two thousand dollars, second place is a thousand, and third place is five hundred dollars. And it's gonna be held at the South Suburban College, um, the first Saturday in June. So whatever Saturday that is. Um, so, um, we're gonna have more information and you'll see it on the website. So if you know any of the schools that want to participate with the kids and that, they should get in. And I think this is a lot of money, um, for a kid, two thousand dollars first place. I was planning on dressing up a little bit, see if I can get in and show my little talent. Um, another thing, Jennifer, thanks for, uh, sharing about the majorleabaseball.com. Um, you know, believe it or not, there's a lot of jobs out here. And it's, it's sad that these children don't take the initiative to go out and apply for them. Or it's even sadder that the parents allow them to sleep in their basement and don't work. You know, uh, being a kid growing up, uh, you had to work. And by eighteen, you need to know where you was going. You was either going to the military, you was going to get you a job. The one thing you was gonna do is you was gonna be leaving my house because you was not gonna sit around and do nothing. So we, uh, just like education, we should all encourage young people, get a job, get a job, get a job. You know, job keeps you out of trouble. You might get in trouble on the job, but that's fine. But you're gonna get in more trouble at home doing nothing. So, um, you know, uh, make sure you check your neighbors. The, the weather is bad out here. Hopefully, it's gonna get a little warmer, but it's very slippery outside. Uh, I've seen the, uh, Public Works Department, kudos to you, that have been out removing the snow and, um, salting the streets up real good. But the faster, um, they salt them up, the more rain and slushy stuff coming, it gets cold and they freeze back up again. So be careful when you're driving and, and be aware of the children that's walking also. And, um, just as Salvador said, slow down. Everybody just, everybody just slow down. Whatever you're doing, slow down. Unless you're making money, then keep it up. Okay? So, end of my report. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Alderman Davis?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, I want to commend Mr. and Ms. Hicks. Um, not only do they, did they win the, the award, uh, in the fifth ward for decorations, but if you come by their house during the summer, during Halloween, flowers, they're always, uh, a cut above most of the residents. So thank you, guys, and, uh, keep up the good work. Um, also, um, want to, um, just take a moment of silence. Uh, Ms. Valerie Oles, uh, I don't know if the Police Department will remember, but a couple of years ago during COVID, you guys did a drive-by and they televised it. That was on, um, one hundred eighty-ninth Street. And the Fire Department's picked her up, but she's a over thirty-year resident on one hundred eighty-ninth. And her homegoing is this Friday. Um, it's at, uh, visitations at, um, Schaefer Funeral Home in South Howland. And her homegoing is actually, uh, Saturday. And it's at the Lighthouse Church of All Nations, forty-five oh one West, one hundred twenty-seventh. And it starts at, uh, the wake is at ten and the funeral is at twelve. But real good resident, mayor, the big family, and, um, you know, she's, um, she'll be missed. Uh, that is the end of my report. Okay. Thank you.
Did you request a moment of silence?
Resolution for? Uh, no, but we, if I can, I will, Mayor. Appreciate that. I know I just did. Thank you. Uh, we'll take a moment of silence if we can.
Yeah. Okay. Wait there.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and Mayor, if we can, I know we did talk about, uh, the simmer situation, the two residents. If we can just
Right.
Look into that. Um, I hate that they did leave because they did make some promises that, I don't know if they, you know, to do some things with the residents during the summer, uh, beautifying their neighborhood. And, uh, I did talk to Jerry earlier, and we can just look into it and see if it's any validity into, to some of the situations. I know they're gonna be putting up some other trees, but I don't know if that'll alleviate, uh, their concern. But just want
I understand.
All right. But thank you.
We'll check into it now. John?
Mayor, thank you. Uh, follow up on the, uh, speed bumps. We have bought them. We have them. But something, we pull them up before winter because of the way they're made and the, the snowplows can't go over them right. But we started out as Aldermen with a list of streets for Public Works to go and put speed bumps. Then they get evaluated by the Police Department, making sure that there is enough speeding and things going through, cars going through. So we will start probably end of April evaluating each ward to make sure that we know what streets to put speed bumps. So please keep in touch with your Aldermen, keep your pictures, and then we will try our best to get some speed bumps out there during the summer months. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Hudson?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. We're just gonna reiterate, uh, Lockett report because that was on my report today, and I'm gonna keep, keep it going. I'd like to give thanks to the Public Work, uh, crew for the removal of the snow, uh, during this past week. And I also like to give, uh, kudos to the Police Department who assisted them. And as, uh, my colleague also, um, informed everyone, please check on your neighbor. You know, it may be a situation where you see the snow, have it been shoveled or something? It could be a serious illness in a house or they can't, may have some physical disability. Or they may be, knock on their door, ring the doorbell, make a phone call. It's always important. And also, I'm gonna bring to the Council as well as to the people of C.C. Hills, there's a new scam in town. And this scam is if you at, it was in Wal-Mart's, if you have Wal-Mart's or someone like that, and you leave the store, and as you drive away, you notice your tire is flat. What they're doing is cutting your rear passenger tire, and they're following you so you can get out your car, walk around, or look at their rear tire so they can rob you. So my advice is if you have that situation occurred, drive somewhere where it's lit, lit up, Police Department, Fire Department, and blow your horn. You know, lights, people, criminals hate them. So be alert on something like that. Okay? And as I always report, see something, say something. Call nine-one-one. End of report. Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Before we close, Mayor, I just want to ask, um, Ms. Purvis, have we scheduled a date yet for the Black History Program?
Yes.
Saturday, February twenty-fourth, here at City Hall. So, uh, just to get the word out early, uh, while we got a lot of residents here, Black History Program, Saturday, February twenty-fourth, here at City Hall at, what time?
Twelve to four.
Twelve to four. So tell a friend, bring a friend, and we'll see you then.
All right. Thank you. Uh, one last thing. Uh, we have one of our oldest residents to pass this week. Uh, Ms. Stotler, Emery Stotler passed. Uh, she was a hundred and three years old, uh, young, and she passed earlier this week. Um, so we wanted to make sure that we make you aware of that. I do not have the arrangements yet at this point. But when I do get those, I'll pass those on to the Council members, and we'll put it up on, on our internet. So the residents will also have that information as well. So, um, to that family, we ask that you keep them in your prayer. Um, at a hundred years old, you would pass her house and she'll still be out trying to plant flowers and stuff. You know, it's really amazing. So she's one of the long, long-time residents of Country Club Hills, and, uh, her farm is just down the street, one of the historical farms in town. So just wanted to bring that out to you as well. Um, the second thing is that we talked about jobs. Yeah, SC Johnson, we're still trying to find individuals to work at SC Johnson, which is right here in City of Country Club Hills, uh, looking for people. And then as far as, uh, the landscaping company, uh, yeah, there's a plan, um, to, uh, increase the burn, plant additional trees, and also, uh, correct the fence. Now, I must say that I know, you know, everything stops here at the mayor's desk, but we had multiple meetings with those residents before the business came. And, um, at that point in time, none of the residents had any questions. But now they are, and I understand. Um, but I tell you one thing, if she puts her house up for sale, I, I guarantee you in two months it'll be gone. Because that's the way houses are selling here. Doesn't matter where it is in Country Club Hills. It'll be gone. So someone want to take me up on that bet, I got some money here. Yeah. Better, better put it up, and I think you, it'll be gone. But anyway, with that said, I do appreciate everyone, and we, we value, uh, our residents and their concerns. And so we definitely will look into that. But, uh, it's, uh, a plan already in place. So we're gonna see what we can do to eliminate that, that issue.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to take a few moments. And as we're talking about employment opportunities, let me tell you who has some jobs. Country Club Hills. How about that? So we, we're looking for a media coordinator. We're looking for an assistant supervisor of water, director of Public Works and Water Department, certified full-time firefighter EMT. Oh, no, are we still doing that? Nope. Okay, scratch that one. Uh, Building Department Code Enforcement Officer, Finance Director, Water Operator, lateral police officer, still? Yes. Okay. And?
CSO.
And CSO? And that is it? Oh, I'm sorry. And a custodian.
Yes. Thank you. So.
Chief. Oh, about to say, I'm ain't no Alderman nor my hold of you, the police chief.
Uh, you can come up and apply with me today if you want one of those jobs. I can give you information. Uh, but, um, I think that's, uh, Treasurer, anything?
Uh, no, Your Honor. I just wanted to say, uh, Jennifer, uh, she's also mentioning, I'm also a basketball ref, and I got three young people to start reffing. And this weekend, they made almost five hundred dollars
Wrong.
Over the weekend. So if anybody interested in becoming a basketball official, especially gotta be eighteen years old, I got the certification papers, and I'll get you to an designer. And you can make, uh, you're young. I can't do four or five games, but they can do ten games. And over the weekend, I have five hundred dollars in their pocket. So, end of my report.
That's great news. Thank you. And Jennifer and your committee, Environmental Committee, thank you again for your hard work. And with that, I need a motion to
I'd like to make a motion for a German.
Second.
It's been probably motion is second. Uh, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would like to speak to the Mayor or the Council, please come forward.
Seven fifty P M.
Seven fifty. Thank you all. Have a great weekend and be safe out there. It's a little slick and slippy.